I'd like to call to order the town council meeting of March 24th. Would you stand for the Pledge of Legions?
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call, please.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pondina.
Present.
Michael Schilling is absent. Gerald Swett.
Present.
Dave Westlin.
Present.
And Doug Hernandez, present.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Item number four is the approval of the minutes. You have before you the February 24th minutes. Any questions or corrections? Then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian.
I'll second.
Thank you, Wayne. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That is approved, three to zero. Number five is a presentation by NIPSCO regarding the acquisition of town property to expand the existing Palmyra substation.
We have a handout just of the land acquisition.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate the time this evening. I'm Megan Hunning, I'm with NIPSCO Public Affairs.
Thank you.
I have Dan Elzinga with us today as well. He's with NIPSCO Land. And Jim Skiff, he's with Engineering, in case there's any technical questions that Dan or myself are not able to answer with you today. So, the purpose of the meeting today, and you can move to slide three, we're looking to expand the existing Palmyra substation, which is located east on White Oak of 231 and 41 currently. This project is part of NIPSCO's ongoing plan to modernize our infrastructure. We started it about five years ago. There's a lot of expansion and economic growth in the St. John area, so in order for us to be able to serve our customers best and the community best, we're looking to do upgrades and expand a 12.5 KV line and a 69 KV line east of the existing substation. You can go to the next slide, thank you. So, a few years ago, I don't know how long it was, but we had sold land to the town of St. John. The parcel is to the east, and we're looking to purchase that parcel back. And I'll let Dan kind of go through the information on that.
Yeah, so basically, I don't know how long, I believe it was 2007, NIPSCO owned, you can see the substation outline there, NIPSCO owned that entire piece even farther to the east, all the way up to the bike trail, and at some point, I'm guessing, St. John was interested in putting in their bike trail, so we kept a little piece for our substation, and you guys took the rest. And now, the substation's getting to a point due to the, all the growth in the area that we need to modernize it and upgrade it and make it more reliable. So, in order to accommodate that, we need to purchase an additional 175 feet to the east of our existing substation. And so, we're kind of here to help, or answer any questions you guys may have, and try to find what your process is in order to sell property.
Yeah, to move forward. It's a great upgrade for the, for the community business that costs the most.
So, we're looking at the box in blue.
Actually, the sheet that I handed out kind of showed, that's because kind of like the location of the poles, they're all staying within our property that we already have. And that's, that kind of just shows the locate, wire layout and location of new towers.
Is there going to be an increase in the size of the actual equipment you have on site?
Uh, Jim, I don't believe, I don't believe so.
As far as the size, Jim, it's getting difficult. Could you please give me the phone? It'll probably be just...
Come up to the microphone.
As far, as far as the size of the equipment, it'll probably be existing, as far as the transformers are all basically about the same size, I'm not a substation guy, but there will be, it will be a longer, the whole purpose of it is, as I mentioned, the growth, but because there's so much growth, that substation is the most overloaded substation we have in the company, and that circuit is what we call a radio, comes from one direction, and it's the most overloaded circuit coming in here, because you guys are growing like crazy. So, we just want to expand that and stretch out, and I'm going to come over here, I know I'm supposed to be by the mic.
No, no, that's fine.
Over here is a 345 ComEd line that ties into NIPSCO, you know, after the state line becomes NIPSCO. So, we, we have to stretch this out because we're worried about getting holes into what they call a blow-off, that 345 blown into it. So, that's why we're asking to stretch this out, stretch out our equipment, instead of trying to condense it into a little area, because that ComEd is 34, ComEd 3, uh, NIPSCO 345 line, there's the double circuit.
I know you're saying we're growing, and that's understandable. Is this for the future, once your work is accomplished? Is this going to help us not have the power failures that we've had previously?
Correct.
I'd like to hear that.
Yeah.
So would the citizens, yes.
We did, we've been really evaluating our system over the past year or so. We hired some outside contractors to do a system reliability study, and this substation was one of the first ones that we looked at to upgrade due to growth, and it will also help and support the reduced power outages, yes.
One thing I'd like to add, I'll walk back over here. So, I was telling you that this is on a radio, you know, so you got one feed coming into the Palmyra right here, and that feeds, if the line goes down in this section, you're out for a while until you get trucks down there and build the line. So, you have, you know, after that phase, along the line, oh, here, there's already a pole line, 12.5 pole line you call it, we're going to overbuild that after we get this sub done and that line in, we're going to overbuild this with another 69 line that goes back to our St. John substation on 93rd Street, I think it is. So, eventually, so then you'll have two, it won't be on a radio, but it'll be on a loop. So, if one goes down, you'll have the other line to feed it as well, so it's all part of...
You're supporting distribution and transmission lines, so your distribution is what's going to feed like your residential areas and your businesses. Transmission line, which are the larger lines, your 69 KV that we're going to run throughout, that's your overall power source that feeds into that distribution line. So, it's going to have double protection.
So, it's, it's going to be overall better for the town?
Right, yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And we're not actually, we're not expanding the actual size of the substation, correct, Jim?
No.
It's just, it's just some of the equipment and your poles and lines and new towers. So, the actual...
So, basically, you're replacing the guts.
Correct, yes, and poles and lines. So, the actual footprint of the substation itself is not expanding, correct?
No, yeah, that will too.
A little bit, okay.
Because it gets stretched out, so we're, so...
What are we expanding to?
So, this gray stone here is a substation that's actually going to come out, here's, where's new, new transformer's going to go, instead of having one transformer here, you're going to have two, we're going to get rid of this old one, put a new one here, and a new one here, Terminal 1, Terminal 2, and the other sub, it's probably, I think it's going right about here, actually, that, that'll be, so, and all of this will be, like I said, stretched out, and that'll be part of the substation.
Thank you.
How long has this been in planning?
I'm sorry?
How long has this been in your planning?
Uh, I couldn't tell you.
Okay, a while, all right.
I don't know.
I thought it might have been something, something that came up in the last year or two with all our power.
Yeah, I would say two years.
With all our power failures, yeah.
We're, we're looking at starting the project in the fall, and it will run into 2002, too.
So, you're looking at 100 by 300?
100, so we already own, you can see the Westerly line, the bolt, of the bold box. We already own to that.
Yeah, but I'm trying, I'm trying to figure that on the schematic that I got.
Yep, yeah, so we own to that line, and then we want to purchase an additional 175 feet to the east.
Okay.
Keeping the same north-south distance.
Okay, Wayne, you have any questions?
No.
No.
How do we go about the negotiating?
What's our next step there, Mr. Westlin?
Um, do you have...
I've already ordered an appraisal.
That's, that's the next step.
I assume, I assume that would be needed, so that's on the way, should be here in a week or two. Were you on the phone, on the last call?
Yeah, it was like a month ago, right?
Jeff Vail on it, so I think that was approved, so he should have it done here in a few weeks, and then...
Right, and depending on the size, I, I can't imagine this vacant piece of property is going to be worth a huge sum of money, but depending on where Jeff's appraisal comes in, that may be the end of it, we may be able to, to kind of proceed with the transaction.
I think in 2007, we sold that entire piece, which, I don't know if it was 10 acres or so, it was like $9,000 or something.
So, yeah, assuming, assuming it all stays in that ballpark, it'll be, it'll be a fairly simple transaction.
Okay. And we don't need to get our own appraiser?
Well, once we, let me look at Jeff's first, but that should be, that's going to be sufficient to start.
Okay.
And you guys...
And they, they actually, I'm sorry, they actually, on that call a month ago, I think they inquired as to who we would use, and my recommendation was Jeff, so I think they were following my lead with that, if I'm, and I noticed Mr. Kalinsky is still not here. Just let him know.
Okay. Thank you for your time, and we'll work through the process.
Okay, perfect, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Item number six, public comment. Has anyone signed in? Mr. Borsma.
Oh, Mr. Borsma and Mr. Kiper are the two that have signed in.
Okay.
John Borsma, 11930 West 103rd Court. I got a couple things, just want to make an announcement about the memorial behind us, thanks to Todd Batman, Jeff Voss, Danny Rising, and Gabe Hernandez for helping us put the two signs up. So, that project should be kicking off Memorial Day weekend, we'll have a ribbon and cutting ceremony, May 30th, and, so if everybody could come out, support that, that would be great. Also, another thanks to the Clerk Treasurers Office for creating that Making a Difference Commitment to the Community Award. So, that's to honor all the St. John residents, businesses, and organizations that go above and beyond to help the community, giving back to the community. So, thank you guys for doing that, that's awesome. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, John.
And I'm sorry, who else did you say was on there?
Mr. Kiper.
Mr. Kiper.
Good evening, if it's okay, can I take this off while I'm speaking? Okay, thank you. Tim Kiper here, representing Tobacco Island, Inc., on item 7F on your agenda tonight.
Yes.
For a special exception in the Route 41 overlay district. It's my understanding that discussion is not allowed when the agenda item comes up, so I wanted to take this opportunity just to provide a little bit of insight on this matter for your consideration tonight. I strongly urge you to review carefully the February 22nd, 2021 BZA minutes and the written findings of fact that you have in your packet for this item tonight. For a little bit of brief history, my client came into the town in November of 2020 to inquire about what would be required to open up a tobacco shop at the proposed location. The proposed location is the former J&amp;M Golf site that's in front of the transmission shop over near Allsepp, so I'm sure you're all familiar with that location. They were informed that only a business license was required at that time for a tobacco shop because it's permitted in an industrial zone. Now, you were without a planning director at the time, without a town manager, things happen, and overlays are difficult to maneuver through sometimes, so it's understandable what happened. So, they signed a lease, they put improvements in the property, did an epoxy floor, did all kinds of stuff upwards of $20,000 approximately, and then they came in in January to inquire about the business license. At that time, they were told, oh, you need a special exception because it's in the Route 41 overlay district, and while it's a permitted use in the industrial, because of the overlay, you need a special exception. So, they filed, they submitted it, they did all the notices, they did everything they were required to, and the BZA held their public hearing on February 22nd. Now, mind you, they did notices to all of the neighbors, they did notices in both papers for several days, not just the one day. And just, so we're on the same page, a special exception unlike a variance that is discretionary, the town by its zoning ordinance is stating that the use is contemplated and allowed in that overlay district, subject to conditions. And it's our opinion that these conditions were clearly met at the BZA meeting. When you review again the minutes and the written findings of fact, you'll find that there were no remonstrators against the proposed use, none. There were only written letters in support of the proposed use, including Tom Anderson of the town of Sherrville stating that the Sherrville location was great, they appreciate it, Triton Safety Village, they're a great community asset, they give money, and things like that. At that meeting, my client offered, I'm sorry, at that meeting, the only issue that came up was LED lights and changing the outside of the building. My client agreed and offered that they would not change the outside of the building except for a, a sign like where the J&amp;M Golf thing was located, and they would not use LED lights. At that time, a motion was made for a favorable recommendation with those conditions, but it failed to pass because it was two to three. Immediately after that, without any further comment or basically any other facts or anything else, there was an unfavorable recommendation which passed three to two. Now, at that time, no oral findings of fact were provided, no written findings of fact were provided, and then on March 15th, the BZA, at their next regularly scheduled public meeting, adopted written findings of fact that were prepared sometime in between there. There's seven conditions for a special exception. In those written findings of fact that were approved on March 15th, items 1, 2, and 3 were not found in favor, items 4, 5, 6, and 7 were found in favor. And so, I want to run through these very, very quickly, and I appreciate your time. Item 1 says the use will be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare. That's just wrong. This is a contemplated and permitted use in that district, subject to conditions. You guys, through your code, have said, this is okay, but you have to go through this process, we want to make sure traffic's okay, we want to make sure these things are okay, and these other things. Item 2 says the use will be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the property in the immediate vicinity for the proposed, or for the purpose already permitted, and impair values. This is simply not true. But certainly, if it was the case, the people notified would have showed up, the neighbors around it, the public at large, somebody would have came and said, hey, this is going to infect our business, it's going to infect our property values, something, but there was nothing. Again, no remonstrators against, and only letters of support, again, good community citizens, Triton Safety Village, and, and Sherrville who has experience with the location that was put up recently. Item 3 says the use will impede the normal and orderly development and improvements of the surrounding property. Again, this is just incorrect. Most of the area is already developed, and this use would not impede any further development or use surrounding that property. We are requesting the town council to approve the special exception after considering the actual record that was presented to the BZA. We're still happy to commit to not use LED lights or change the outside of the building, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and I do appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Mr. Kiper.
I have one question, just I want it on the record. So, Mr. Kiper, you agreed, or you indicated that at the BZA meeting, your client agreed that there would be no LED lights?
Correct.
And so, if this body, either today, or, and we'll get into it at, at this agenda item, you have 90 days from the time it's certified to make your decision, or it's deemed approved. If this body were to, to basically rule in favor and grant the special exception, would your client be willing to agree to that condition upon which it agreed, ostensibly no LED lighting?
I can state on the record now, or at that time, but they would be happy to honor that commitment that they made at the BZA, both for the LED lights and to not change the outside of the building except for signage, which is, you know, allowed and...
Okay, I just wanted that as part of the...
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Kiper? Wayne? Okay.
There was one other person that signed in, Catherine Walsh.
Okay.
And I know Beth has two written.
My name is Catherine, and I'm a 20-year-old resident of Indiana and a 10-year resident of the Dyer and St. John area.
And your address is, for the record?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
9063 Columbia Street. St. John has made up five of those years. I have seen during this time the demand for and supply of residents in this area. I'm very proud of being a resident to one of the most desirable communities. I come here tonight out of a passion that stems from, pun intended, nature and wildlife, specifically to our trees and flowers. The quick development here has unfortunately meant a reduction in our green space. Of particular concern is the removal of much of our canopy layer, the tall, mature trees like our oaks and elms. Thanks to current data and research, scientists have been able to determine the benefit to this layer using something called UTC, which is Urban Tree Canopy Assessments. The urban tree canopy layer is important for reduction of pollution, entering waterways via runoff, reduction in energy costs, removal of carbon monoxide from the air, and an increase of our property value, also sustainability of our ecosystems. A general rule of thumb per cities is per $1 spent on tree installation, a $15 return is received by residents and towns. While the town classification seems to be seeing a shift between rural and more urban, the Lake County area is umbrellaed within the city description of urban. Urban and rural areas are recommended to have a minimum of 49% tree canopy for a healthy and balanced ecosystem and for financial return. After a call to our regional representative from the Indiana DNR down in Indianapolis, it is reported that we are teetering 26%. These statistics, as well as general observation, have prompted me to looking into what our community can do. Becoming a tree city is one possibility that I would like to explore. A tree city is one that has a tree board committee, maintains a tree ordinance, forms a community forestry program with an annual budget of $2 per capita, and holds an Arbor Day observation annually. Several of our neighboring towns, including Dyer, Highland, Mariville, Munster, and Valparaiso, to name a few, are tree cities. Though I came here today out of passion for our ecosystem, my drive extends beyond that and is outreach to the benefit of our future generations. It is my hope that we can have conversations about forming a community of like-minded individuals who share the same passion and concern, and hopefully become a Tree City USA. In parting, I would like to explore a few questions. Do we have a full-time, part-time, or consultative arborist with whom we work for the integrity of our trees? Do our current ordinances have language to protect, preserve, and reestablish trees upon site development? Is becoming a Tree City USA something the town foresees as a possibility? Or at least can we explore stricter covenants, excuse me, stricter covenants for development with regard to Parkway trees and the preservation of our wetlands? Just this week alone, many were shocked at the devastation of our only remaining mature trees near Heartland, an area that was thought to be preserved and untouchable wetlands. I thank you for your time and open ears. I know I speak for many that we admire the beauty of our community, and we wish nothing but the best for its sustainability. I'm open to questions if you have any.
Thank you for your comments. I, I think to answer and respond, I think we are looking at making some improvements in that area.
Okay.
I know we've talked about a tree board and have taken applications for a tree board, and hopefully that will come fairly soon. As far as an arborist, I don't believe we have anyone on staff like that, but I know we've got some educated people on the community garden group, so I don't know if there's an arborist there or not, but...
We don't have one.
No?
Mm-mm.
Okay, all right.
No, we have a master gardener.
Yes.
And that master gardener is very involved in the tri-city, but as far as an arborist goes, that's one of the primary, I guess prerequisites for becoming a tree city, or at least establishing some of the stricter covenants for some of the expansive developments and ensuring that we're not putting back in these problematic trees that are being put in.
Right, that's the whole purpose that we want to put a tree board together, so make sure that we have that, so...
Okay.
I'd like to suggest to you briefly, and following up with Jared just said, that we maybe can invite your help in getting people to apply for the tree board.
Okay.
Because the, the actual, people said they wanted it, and then when we made it a fact, we didn't get the applications that we were hoping for.
Well, in prior communications, I had mentioned that I would happily apply. I don't know the minimum amount that's required for a town ordinance board, is there, is there a minimum amount of personnel that's required?
We haven't set that ordinance yet.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
But I was just looking for your assistance in getting people to apply for the tree board, because we've been having difficulty getting people to actually participate.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I have one comment that our, the guy, one of our guys, Gabe, that works in the Parks Department, he's interested in trying to get into being an arborist, so that, that could help.
Okay, to, to get an arborist, or to become?
To become one, I think.
A certified arborist?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's good to know, so...
So, that's, that's a good start, too.
So, my next step from here should be to just put in that application and then generate more interest?
Interest.
Okay, all right, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to item number seven, new business. Beth, you had a suggestion on an agenda change?
I do, but I have two public comments that were submitted by email. The first is from, well, it's from Ed Merrick, 10135 West 93rd Avenue. He says that he lives across from Lake Hill subdivision. When it was developed, the surrounding neighborhood was promised we would have access to the park and trail via a path. This was stated at an April-May Plan Commission meeting in 2003. To date, access is still not available despite published maps from www.nurpc.org, Greenways and Blueways Northwest Indiana Regional Map showing a path. He has included with this letter two pictures and also a map, which I provided to the town manager's office. Listening on YouTube to Park Board meetings, the town is looking to use some grant money due to expire, please consider this long overdue project.
Okay, that was actually part of the record for last month's meeting. It wasn't read, but it was put into the record, and it was also forwarded to the Park Board.
Thank you. He had just requested that I read it into the record, so I want to make sure that I'm doing what the resident requested that I do.
Okay.
The second was from, or is from Jason Shields of 11202 Parish Avenue. He says, his name is Jason Shields, he owns a home west of the aforementioned property, he would like to express his opposition to the annexation. He opposes the possibility, he opposes because of the possibility of groundwater depletion, increased traffic, and the mess new construction will generate. He would like to request that I send him the audio file of this town meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Did you have something else, Mr. Westlin? Or you were just reminding me of those?
I was just reminding you, sorry.
Okay, all right, so Beth, you wanted to make a modification to the agenda?
I did. I would like to request an amendment to the agenda to move item J, which is the intergovernmental agreement with the Park Board, to the first item of new business this evening.
I have no objection to that, are you guys okay?
So moved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2021-03. Okay?
That's all right. You're okay with that, Brian?
With what?
And obviously, you're okay with moving it, Wayne?
Oh, yeah, moving it is fine. I was going to say, I so moved.
Already to move today.
All right, so, so, yeah, Wayne, go ahead, make your motion.
We don't have to make the motion, now do we?
Well, did you...
We moved it, yes.
Did you want any information on the intergovernmental agreement, or do you feel up to speed?
I do.
Okay.
No, I do want some.
Okay.
I was going to have him make the motion to get it on the board, on the floor, but no, that's, that's fine.
Well, I think that's the, because Founders Park, we're taking money from Prairie West.
I think he's asking if you will make a motion to amend the agenda.
All right, I'll make a, a motion to agenda, amend the agenda.
Okay.
And, and to adopt the, the resolution.
No, okay.
Just move to it.
Just move to amend the agenda.
Let's move to the agenda, movement first, so that's a motion, you support that, Brian?
Yes.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that now becomes item A, comes before item A, let's do it that way.
Perfect.
Okay, so if you... Okay, so if you could, give us a rundown on what this resolution is, Beth.
Sure. So this is an intergovernmental agreement between the Town Council and the Park Board. It does basically two things. The first, it gives commitment from each entity, and by entity, I mean Town Council and Park Board, to spend funds on the Founders Park project through Park Impact Funds, the DNR grant, and the CDBG funds. Just to refresh everyone's memories, last meeting, the Town Council unanimously voted to shift $85,912 from CDBG funds from the Prairie West parking lot expansion to the Founders Park project. And it will also give authority to the Park Board to oversee the project, I guess, or manage the project in its entirety, so that it can continue to move without having to go through a two-step process for each item that must occur. So I think ultimately what we're looking for would be a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Park Board and to allow the Town Council President to execute saying.
Okay. Questions? Brian?
Done.
Wayne, questions or comments?
Done.
Okay, I have no problem with this, so...
So moved.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move, I'd like to make a, I'd like to, if you'll repeat it, Beth.
We're on item number J.
Item J.
So what you're looking for, Mr. Blazek, is a motion to adopt resolution 2021-03-24?
24B.
And authorize?
And authorize and approve entry into an intergovernmental agreement with the Park Board.
And allow the Town Council President to sign that agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. You're okay with that verbiage, Mr. Westlin?
Yes.
Okay, so that is approved three to zero. Now we go back to item A. Awarding the Founders Park construction contract to the lowest and most responsive and responsible bidder. So we have the recommendation from Arsh Group. Mr. Westlin, you have anything to address on this?
No, I think what you're looking to do here is make the award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which is integral, conditioned upon Park Board approval and their award, and also authorize your Park Board, is he a director?
Superintendent.
Superintendent Tyler to execute those documents.
Is that the motion, Dave? That we need?
That's how I'd like to hear it, yeah.
So moved.
Wayne, would you support that? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is done.
Very artfully worded, Brian.
I'm like that.
All right, we'll go on to item number B. Consider resolution 2021-03-24, which is a resolution adopting the fiscal plan for the CWS Holdings LLC annexation. So we had our public hearing last month. We approved this on first reading. Any further questions or comments from the board? Brian or Wayne?
None.
Nope?
Nope.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2021-03-24.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. That is approved three to zero. Item number C is ordinance 1725.
So, there's an issue with there only being three council present?
Mm-hmm.
You can't adopt an ordinance on first reading? You're gonna need to just hear it, because you need two-thirds of the body to approve on first reading, and we don't have two-thirds here.
So, item 1725, it's ordinance annexing the adjacent contiguous territory, which is, we had the public hearing on that last month as well, correct? Yes.
You did.
So we can't adopt? We can only, rephrase that again, sir?
You can hear it on first reading and set it for second reading?
Right.
April.
We can entertain first reading, we just can't adopt?
That's correct.
Okay. So I will look for a motion to entertain ordinance 1725, which means then we'll go to next month for final approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you, Wayne. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have a three to zero. Next is item number D, resolution 2021-03-24A, which is a resolution adopting the fiscal plan for the 1110 LLC annexation, which is the 20 acres of Parrish, 11115 Parrish. Questions or comments? And so we can adopt this resolution? Do I have a motion to do so?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-03-24A.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Wayne. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. That is approved five to zero. Okay. Item E is ordinance 1726, which is the ordinance annexing the same property, 11115 Parrish Avenue in Cedar Lake, Indiana. Questions or comments?
This is the same issue as you had with the past one.
Right. This is the actual annexation itself.
Right.
So we are looking for a motion to adopt ordinance 1726.
On the first reading.
Actually, we're gonna adapt, we're going to...
Entertain it and...
Yes, we will entertain ordinance 1726 tonight, and then it will show up on next month's agenda as well if we approve that tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to accept on first reading ordinance 1726 annexing certain real property commonly known as 11115 Parrish Avenue, Cedar Lake, Indiana.
Thank you, Brian. Support? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. That is three to zero. So that will show up on next month. Okay. So we are on item F, which is to consider the special exception, the request from Ms. Jennifer Busker to locate a Tobacco Island on Earl Drive. You've got the documents there, gentlemen, including the findings of fact, and you have the statement from Mr. Kuiper. Mr. Westlin, do you have a recommendation?
No, the only thing I would say is that it was certified on February 22nd to you, so you have 90 days from then to act. If you don't act, within those 90 days, it's approved automatically. Any vote would have to be unanimous, obviously. You need a majority of the council.
Right.
So, a question would be whether or not, you know, you want the full group here. It went three to two, no matter how you slice it at the BZA. So it's completely your call, it's a, you have the record to rely on. There weren't any remonstrators at the BZA, and Mr. Kuiper made a statement in the open of public, so...
Yeah, so based on Mr. Kuiper's statement, I'd maybe, I would be in favor of deferring this to next month's meeting, so we can investigate it a little bit further and hopefully have a full board here. That's my thoughts.
I thank you, right, we can leave for mic-ing.
Exactly.
Okay, so you somebody want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to defer considering ordinance 1729 to next month.
Second.
Oh, wait a minute. We're not on 1729.
With an unfavorable recommendation.
We're not on 1729, we're on item F, which is the special exception request.
Oh, okay.
From the BZ.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. So we're looking for a motion to defer the special exception request for Tobacco Island on Earl Drive.
So moved.
A second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. That is approved three to zero. That is deferred three to zero, I'm sorry. Okay. Item 1729, as an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction of certain additions and improvements to the waterworks of the town of St. John, insurance of additional revenue bonds, and all matters related here to... Mr. Westlin, you have anything to get us in the right direction on this one? Or anything to add so that we can make sure that we cover all the things that we need to?
No, it's, these are the improvements, this ordinance covers the improvements that would be, and I think they were outlined by Baker Tilly to you in the past, so that, that's basically what you're doing with this ordinance. And again, you have first reading on it tonight.
Do we have Baker Tilly here?
Yeah, this is Phil Fasana from Barnes and Dornberg. I'm here from Barnes and Dornberg, and Eric Walsh is here on the line as well from Baker Tilly.
Okay.
Yes. And these, this, the bond ordinance, and you'll have the waterworks rate ordinance coming next, which is related, and then of course the sewage works rate as well. But on the bond ordinance, as Mr. Westlin said, yes, it's first reading on all three of these ordinances, GH and I. And so for the, you know, for the reading of the council and consideration and for final consideration and public action at the April meeting of the council. The bond ordinance provides for the financing through a waterworks bond, of a bond not to exceed $8,750,000 for improvements that I know the council has been briefed on previously, but just to reiterate, that's the new SCADA system, the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, a new wellhouse for well number eight and well number nine, and a water main relocations and replacements. So several projects that the, that the town has been reviewing and feels it's in need of undertaking. There's, we will report to this, there will be, you know, there will be a public hearing on the, on the waterworks rates and sewage works, and we will report next month as well, or reporting this evening, but I just wanted to give you a brief overview of the ordinance. Eric will talk a little bit, if you desire, when he talks about the rates, about the coverage amounts that, revenue-wise, that the waterworks will have, and a brief overview of a planning of the calendar, the financing calendar. The Water Works Board approved these projects with a declaratory resolution last week and recommended the adoption to, of an ordinance to the Town Council. The Water Works Board will also have a public hearing on those projects next month, prior to the Town Council entertaining this bond ordinance, and the rate ordinance as well. When we get through, if we, if those steps all come through favorably, the bonds will be, will be then marketed and sold. There will be an offering document that Eric's firm will prepare, and, you know, we are looking to close on bonds somewhere in early June as an earliest date, if it's to the council's pleasure to move ahead. I'm happy to answer anything else with regard to the bond ordinance itself.
I guess my question, and I'm not sure if it's for you, Eric, but as far as paying, paying off the bond, we have some requirements there. I mean, that's what we're looking at, a rate increase for, or along with other things?
Correct. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, correct. The, what's next on your agenda item for the introduction of the water rates? Those rates, or that rate adjustment is required to repay the bond issue that Mel just went through. So you're looking at about an 8.4 million is our current estimate for the bond issue, amortizing that over approximately 17, 18 years at current market interest rates. As I told both the water and sanitary board at the last meeting, these bonds cannot be marketed without this rate adjustment, because that's the revenue stream to repay them. And as Phil just mentioned, and I need to talk about this next bullet point, I might as well now, there's a provision called bond coverage that's required typically by bond holders. A minimum bond coverage requirement's about 125%. Based on current estimates, with the rate adjustment we're talking about tonight, you'd be in the 140% to 150% bond coverage range. So we're a little bit higher than kind of the minimum requirement, which is a good thing, because we will be going to Standard and Coors with these bonds to get a rating in an effort to reduce your interest rate. So long with an answer to say, yes, this rate adjustment is required to be able to sell the bonds.
Okay, so the rate increase, so just to clarify, so I had a resident call me and ask about, you know, why we needed to raise the rates. And my statement was, just reviewing some of the information you gave us before, was that our utilities were not funding themselves? The general fund was underwriting quite a bit of the utility funds? Is that correct?
Yes, you really have two different ways that you share cost and revenue with your utility funds. One is a payment lieu of tax, which is made from both water and sanitary, or water and sewage, to the general fund. So that's one way that you're, in essence, helping from the utilities. And then the opposite way, which you referred to, is really some sharing of cost that the general fund's supporting, as opposed to the utilities. But it's been several years since your last rate adjustments. If you remember back several meetings ago that I was at, even without these bonds, if you stayed on the same track in both water and sewer, you would at a point become where your cash reserves were below minimum requirements because of negative cash flows. The reason you've held on so long without really rate adjustments is because of the growth that you've seen. That's really delayed any requirement for rate increases. But now that you have some pretty significant capital improvement needs, not least of which is the SCADA system, as well as many others, those are caused somewhat from your growth, but those are over and above any, any revenue that's really being generated from this new growth is not supporting that much capital spending.
Okay. All right. Beth, anything to add on the finance side of things?
I do not.
Okay. Wayne, anything from the water side or the sewer side of things?
No.
Okay. You have any other questions, Brian?
No.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. So we are looking for, we are looking at ordinance 1729, authorizing the acquisition, construction of certain additions and improvements to the waterworks of the town of St. the waterworks of the town of St. John, issuing some additional revenue bonds and all matters related heretofore. Do I have a motion to consider ordinance 1729 on first reading?
So moved. A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That is approved. Okay, and that will be on next month's agenda as well for the second reading. Item H, consider ordinance 1730, which is an ordinance amending ordinance 1645, establishing rates and charges for the use and services rendered by the waterwork system, and amending ordinance 1385, establishing rates and charges for the use of services rendered by the waterwork system. So this is a actual rate increase? Is that correct, Mr. Westlin?
Yeah.
And this has to be approved then by the utilities, or the utilities have already approved this? Can you?
They approved, I recollection, so correct me, but they approved it. I'm hoping my microphone is on. They approved it a week ago.
Okay. Okay. Questions or comments, gentlemen?
I'd like to make one comment. And since this is coming, I'd like to have a flyer, put in the water bills that's coming up, so everybody knows, so we're transparent and everybody's got a chance to see what we're doing. And if that'll do that, that would be great. But I think the water bill would be a great thing to, for to put it.
So, do you want?
And then I think on, if Phil, I, Phil, I think, and you and Eric, I think on April 14th, there's supposed to be a, a meeting, and that, that would be a meeting where the public can come and remonstrate against this or discuss what the increases are going to be. And then on our next meeting, I think that's on April 28th, we could make that final decision. But then the, the public will have an opportunity to see what we're doing. They can ask questions, and then we'll have two weeks as a town council to digest that, what they're telling us and, you know, their desires, their complaints. But then we can make our final decision on April 28th.
Correct. And the April 28th, again, will be a public hearing. So it will, in addition to any other notice that you're providing, there will be newspaper notice of those public hearings on both rate adjustments.
The only thing, I have a question on there, Wayne. I think you mentioned April 14th. I don't have that as a date. I had April 20th and April 28th as the two dates. Does that match with your, I just want to make sure if there is something on the 14th that you mentioned there, Wayne?
April 14th, but I would like to have a meeting sometime before that town council meeting, so the public has a chance to voice their opinions. I know there's a lot of questions out there.
Well, that's what the 28th is, though. That's a public hearing.
I see.
Correct? Yes. Yeah, he just said the April 28th will be a public hearing.
That is a public hearing before, right, before you can adopt, you got to have the public hearing.
Do you want to have more than that?
Well, we're going to have a public hearing on the 28th, and then we're going to, we're going to vote on it. I don't, I don't like that. I think the people should have a chance to come in, and then we have two weeks to digest that. And that gives them time to ask questions.
Okay.
I mean, you're going to ask somebody what do they think, and then you're going to vote on it right after they, they tell you their, their thoughts.
Okay.
I, I think that when we ran for election, we wanted to be transparent and give them an opportunity to see what we're doing.
I'm not opposed to that.
No, I'm just saying.
But this has been in the pipeline now for at least the last four months that we've been talking about a rate increase.
It's been almost a year.
Well, no, because Eric was here earlier in the year when we were working, when we were working on our budget last year. He said this was going to be a requirement, so.
Right, but it was brought up in a June meeting.
Yeah.
And then it was brought up in a August meeting, and everything was supposed to be set and done by the beginning of the year.
Okay.
And, and I think the public, we, they deserve that.
All right, so let's, we'll review, we'll select a date sometime in April that works for everybody and make the public notice of that, hopefully two weeks prior to the council meeting, something like that.
Okay.
All right. Now, you asked about having something in the water bills. That was not a motion to modify this, correct?
No, I think it's a simple request to, to that, in our office, that it can put a little snippet in there that would explain that, and.
And do you want to wait until we actually approve it before we do that, or get it out, let them know that there's something coming?
I would like to let them know that something's coming, and that maybe we can decide on that meeting, make maybe two. I, I had on 14th on my notes, but I, you know, I could have made some mistake. And if, and if Eric wants to be there, that would be great, and help answer any questions.
All right, so let's, let's see, make sure that everybody's calendars are good, and we'll, we'll get back and get that scheduled.
Okay.
Okay, so, back to the motion. So we have a motion to consider ordinance, consider ordinance 1730 on first reading. So is there a motion for that?
So moved.
In support?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved three to zero. And we'll look for a mid-April council meeting. Okay. All right, so we are in item I. This is ordinance 1731, which is amending ordinance 1634, establishing the schedule of rates and charges to be collected by the town of St. John from the owners and property served by the sewage works and other matters connected with them. So this is basically the same thing we just did, only for sewer instead of water. Okay. Questions or comments?
None.
Then I will entertain a motion to consider ordinance 1731 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. That approved three to zero. On item J, we already took care of. We go to item K, which is Resolution 2021-03-24C, approving transfer of appropriations. Beth?
Essentially, the majority of the appropriation transfers that you'll see on the resolution this month, what we did in our budget this, this, this year is each item that was listed in the capital plan or the five-year plan, we made specific line items for, so that each department can kind of track where they're at with each expense. And so, the items you're seeing listed are just transferring money up to those different line items because they were created newly this year.
So the, so column on the right, many of those are brand-new funds that were created just so you can subdivide.
Yes.
Some of the expenditures, so.
I think you'll see like the .001 and .002, so those are newly created lines.
Right.
And then you'll see in parentheses, it will list what the expense is for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Yep, that will make it a little bit easier to keep track.
I think so.
Good. Questions or comments?
None.
Then I will entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-03-24C.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved three to zero. Okay. Up to number eight, reports and correspondence, town council. Brian, anything?
No, sir.
Wayne?
Nothing.
I have nothing. Item B. Beth?
I'm just going to make a few announcements of upcoming events and things going on in the community. First, I just wanted to let everybody, or remind everybody, that pet tags are due by March 31st. It's $8 if your dog or cat is spayed or neutered, $20 if they are not, $10 if your cat is spayed or neutered, and then if you don't pay by the 31st of this month, you will incur a $10 late fee. The Tyler I know has been working pretty hard on this with the garden club. The Patno Family Gardens is still accepting garden beds. It's a $40 resident fee, and registration is open. He also put out his coed sand volleyball. Registration is open for that. You can do so by coming into the clerk treasurer's office, or we now allow registrations online at stjohnion.com, and then you will click on the Pay Online tab. So that's new this year, being able to do that. This one's pretty big for town, the town out of our Public Works Department. Leaf and Branch Pickup is making its return in April. Leaf pickup for the north side of 93rd begins April 5th through April 9th. Please make sure that your leaves are at the curb by 7:00 a.m. on Monday. Branch pickup begins for the north side of 93rd, April 12th through April 16th. Same thing, please make sure your branches are at the curb by 7:00 a.m. on Monday. This one has generated quite a bit of excitement. Our townwide garage sale dates have been set. Those are June, it will be June 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th this year. Be on the lookout in your water bills on Facebook, and if you're paperless billing through an email, there will be a link for you to register your garage sale. And then we will work on advertising them. This year, instead of doing a map system, we're going, going to organize them by subdivision to just kind of get you in the right direction, and then you can Google search the addresses. So anybody who would like to register their garage sale can do so by Thursday, May 20th. Just two more. We've got, our rain barrels and composters are still for sale. You can purchase them online or through the clerk treasurer's office. Due dates for that, if you do a mail-in order, that's April 21st, and an online order is due by April 25th. And lastly, I know Johnny brought up the Making a Difference, the Commitment to Community Award. If you are aware of any St. John residents, businesses, or organizations who are making any difference in the community through their time, actions, and dedication, we ask that you go online, submit a nomination form, and then we're going to go ahead and present a certificate of appreciation at the next meeting. So that is online for you and on the Facebook page. Those were my announcements.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Westlin, anything to add?
So I have two items, one of which is Mr. Kovacevic.
Washington Justice.
I screwed that up last month, too, I think. I apologize. Oh, um, one for two. He had signed in on the redevelopment commission after that meeting, so he had asked that he be allowed public comment.
Okay.
That's one item.
That's one.
And the second one is, as you can see, Mr. Kuiper is still sitting here. The settlement agreement with BLB, as you are all aware, had to be approved by the sanitary district. The sanitary board met last night. They had expressed a few concerns over the document, the actual, the final settlement agreement, which Mr. Kuiper and I spoke this morning. He agreed, Mr. Lawton agreed through Mr. Kuiper, to make the following changes. In paragraph 2, 5, 2, 5, 14, and those three paragraphs where it referred to Hardyboard or Smart Siding Style, to add the words, the concern from the, the sanitary board was that you were specifying a specific product or manufacturer. And so what we've done is, we've made the change to say Hardyboard, Smart Siding Style or Equivalent. They indicated last night that they would be in favor of that type of change, and that's in those three places in the document. The other changes they requested were with regard to the privacy fence in paragraph 11 between green acres and the 108-acre property. The privacy fence shall be consistent with the remainder of the approved fencing for the Gates East 111-acre property and the Gates East 108-acre property, so that the fencing is uniform and consistent with BLB's development. So they asked for a change of that nature as well. And then finally, they asked for, in paragraph 16, there was an obligation on the developer to construct a bike trail along the Nipco easement from the 111-acre parcel at Joliet and 101st Northeast to the eastern property line of the replacement property. Previously, there was no deadline on that. The sanitary board wanted a deadline, and so Mr. Kuiper and Mr. Lawton have proposed to add the language that that would be constructed within six months of the last final plat being approved by the town on the replacement property. So, those are the changes that the sanitary board requested. As a matter, now that I've read them in the record here, what we'd be looking for is if you're in agreement with those changes, that there be a motion and approval of those changes to the document, and the document being, the settlement agreement being approved as amended, as I've outlined. If you do that tonight, then the sanitary board can set a meeting, a special meeting, to consider the new document. And I know, you know, this has kind of languished on for about 45 days, so I don't want to be, I don't want to speak for Mr. Kuiper, but I think his client is anxious for, for that approval tonight, if you so desire, and then the sanitary board do approve at its earliest possible time for a special meeting. You know, we're at the, like, the one-yard line here, right? And, and I did explain to the sanitary board last night that there's a lot at stake, and there are a lot of, you know, there's, there's a lot at stake in the lawsuits that are being settled, and there's a lot at stake in terms of the attorney fees that have gone into both the litigation as well as negotiating this agreement. So I don't think either party wants to see it fail when we're so close, but ultimately, it's, it's your decision. I can tell you from the sentiment last night, the sanitary board is not going to approve this without those changes.
Well, I think in order, maybe in an effort to keep from going backwards or back and forth, maybe we should have an executive session. If we approve this, we could have an executive session with, with the sanitary and make sure that, with their board and the town council, to make sure that.
And Mr. Westlin?
Yeah.
And if we could do that on Monday, not on Monday, on Tuesday or Wednesday, we have enough time to notice it and make sure everybody gets there and we can call it resolved.
Let's make sure.
Well, I, I would like to, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm fine on Tuesday or Wednesday, and I would ask that you do the executive session with the sanitary board, followed immediately by a sanitary board meeting, a public meeting where they consider the document, right? Because I want, I need them to, to take action.
So Tuesday or Wednesday is fine with you?
I know Tuesday is. Let me just double-check Wednesday. I'm pretty sure it's fine.
Thirty-first and 31st.
So Wayne, you can reach out to the board and make sure they're available and, with that meeting, those meetings, I should say.
And then.
The 30, the 31st is better. I have a six o'clock meeting on the 30th. I know what they had talked about was like, not the executive session, but they had talked about holding a special meeting of the sanitary board at 5:00, like a Zoom, you know, or however we do it, right? Like a virtual meeting where they could have approved the document. I just, it need to be done by 6:00 on Tuesday night. Wednesday, I'm wide open. So.
We could, we could go earlier on Tuesday, then.
You could go, and I'm fine.
Prior to their 5:00.
Yeah, I'm fine on Tuesday all afternoon, so whenever you want to do it.
Whatever works, Wayne, whatever. Whatever you can get the sanitary board timewise, that works for most of them or all of them.
So it's either Tuesday or Wednesday, and then 5:00 on Tuesday, 5:00 p.m.?
No, earlier than that, probably. They want to have their, their meeting at 5:00, so we want to have the executive session probably at 4:30.
Wow.
Does that make sense?
Earliest is 4:30.
That's what I'm saying. Wednesday probably gives you a little bit more.
Yeah, Wednesday gives you more leeway.
But.
I just, I, I don't want us to approve this and then it goes to them, and they've got more questions or concerns. I just assume, let's get it all done at one session, that they're going to be comfortable with the agreement and make sure they understand it in detail.
Right.
I'd like to get that done. I'd like to get that done. You all right with that, Wayne?
Yep. Wednesday at, let's try Wednesday, what's the earliest you can?
I'm open Wednesday.
All day. I know some of them work, so.
Yeah, me too. How many time available after 12?
And we have to contact them tomorrow, because you have two or three days to notice it in the paper, two days.
48 hours. What? You have business hours, so you can't count the weekend.
Okay.
Right.
So.
You all right with that, Brian?
Fine.
Okay, so then we will look for a motion to approve. Approve the settlement agreement as amended by Mr. Westlin. Is that satisfactory?
Yeah, the amendments I've outlined.
Yes. Okay. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 That is approved, three to zero. You have a comment?
If I could, and I don't mean to interject, and I appreciate everything that Attorney Westlin said, but given the interesting discussion that was had at the sanitary board last night, I might suggest that you schedule also a special town council meeting prior to the special sanitary board meeting, in case there is some.
Change.
Interestingness in some wording that they want, that, in my opinion, and I believe Attorney Westlin's opinion, does not change what is there, such as like the style or equivalent that we put in tonight.
Right.
Just so that we're not waiting then again another four weeks, three weeks. So just as a suggestion, so, thank you.
Makes sense to me. You good with that?
Thank you, Dan.
It's certainly a belt-and-suspenders suggestion. I think it's probably a good suggestion in light of the discussion yesterday, but I can tell you, every one of their comments has been addressed. I hope it's not necessary. I hope Mr. Kuiper's suggestion is not necessary, but I don't think it's a bad suggestion.
Okay. You okay with that, Wayne?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll make that happen. That doesn't require any action. All right. Item number 10, payment of the bill, I'm sorry, nope, got to go back. Request to purchase.
Okay, so we have 10 requests to purchase. Even though I'm not going to read them out in their entirety, I would like to, just for auditing purposes, at least read the vendors into the record, if we ever have to go back to find out when something was. So we have 10 RTPs totaling $313,824.28. The first RTP is from, well, we have two RTPs from Gaskill and Walton, Master Meter, Peerless Midwest, Corin Maine, three RTPs from Ferguson Waterworks, one from Ray O'Hara and Company, and then one from Castonia Tractor. Again, the total is $313,824.28.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pay the RTPs for $313,824.28.
Okay.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay, that approved three to zero. Item number 10, payment of the bills. Then when you have the voucher in front of you, the list totaling $1,226,636.22. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $1,226,636.22.
Okay. Support that, Mr. Pundinas?
A second, I'm sorry.
That's all right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. That is approved, three to zero. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In support?